Okay, um, morning, everyone. We will call the meeting to order at nine thirty-four. We'll take roll call. Erin Hamm.
Present.
Amalijai Asinda.
Present.
Richard Lopez.
Present.
Tiffany Pickle, present, and Julio Valadez, absent. Uh, before we begin, um, uh, guests are not required to mask unless a student enters. And then we are required that, uh, board and cabinet will be masking for the meeting. Uh, I want everyone to stand for the plat- uh, Plaxton, please. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, in the God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Lopez?
Hi.
Mrs. Hamm?
Hi.
Ms. Asinda?
Hi.
Yeah, Mrs. Pickle, hi. This motion carries four zero. Uh, before we move to the next item, um, just to let, um, everyone know, um, all the guests and those watching remotely, that this is a discussion item, uh, the board is not voting or taking any action today. Uh, for public comment, um, if you, anyone seated to my right that plans to comment, if you do want to be on camera, you will have to move to the corner in order for the camera to pick you up. Anyone else, as long as you stand, um, and speak to the board, you will be, uh, heard, um, via the audio and you will be picked up on camera as well. Okay? So first speaker, we have Ms. Allen.
I want to be on camera.
Yes, they'll, they'll pick you up, yes, right there, would be perfect, thank you.
Okay. Shall I start?
Yes, yeah.
My name is Elizabeth Allen. I have three children graduate through Merced High School District and, uh, um, I was a speechwriter and pathologist at, uh, the elementary schools at Merced City Schools for thirty, over thirty years. I've studied to talk at several of the schools, uh, high schools and low ones. Um, I think that we have been misguided. Um, I, let me give you background a little bit. I worked four years at UCF. Two years of those were with genetic diseases, two years as secretary to scientists working on infectious diseases. Um, my boss had hit in fifteen for health sciences, Wes, his name's Dr. Him now. He was working on plague, he was working on botulism. We never wore masks, we never wore gloves, there were big tents. Uh, we ate in the room where they had, uh, they were cleaning all the instruments and, and to trick you shame the instruments. We didn't have any thoughts of fear, we didn't worry about it. And my boss had, uh, if you know, put on a cat kit, this is a baboon, and he had a plexiglass containers with all stages of bubonic plague, uh, shown in his office. So, uh, my background is in research, I, you know, did that and I'm a science agent in biology for a year. To speak about mandates first, I just want to reach for you, to you, what is thinking about mandates? The mandate can't override the Constitution. Okay? Uh, all laws and mandates will need to follow the rules established by the Constitution. I think that's really important that we remember that, no matter, you know, what, where you come from. The mandate can't overrule any existing state or federal law. We have, as the people, we have rights. We have the freedom of speech and we have the freedom of choice given to us in the Constitution. All right. I don't know if you know it or not, but that test for COVID has been debunked. The test that we have with the swab that you know is no longer valid. It was never valid, it was a research project, you guys, all right? So, um, I printed this out, some newer copies right here available, and it gives information. They changed the cycle, and I, I'm not going to go into it in this explanation here. They changed the cycles in January of twenty twenty, so that it would be so sensitive that it would identify COVID, even though it wasn't COVID, it was to breathe from COVID. All right? And so they have to bump stuff and Bill Gates and George Soros have purchased a, uh, lab in, or excuse me, a biotech company in the United Kingdom now because the CDC has recommended that they're going to tell people that this doesn't work, this doesn't identify, that's valid. There's a validity question here, they, Dr. Ture, the data on this, and this is the information. July twenty-fifth, they knew what's wrong, they did it on purpose. Um, and you have to ask yourself, why? Why did they change the cycles so that it's so sensitive if, if invalid? Why did they do that? Because there's only more people trying to fight against COVID. In October, we first exposed how PCR tests have misled officials worldwide into insanely authoritative reactions. That's in the paper. Okay? This is okay. I hope I have some time here. Okay, so a doctor went, uh, to have my lab to go through and-
Ms. Allen, that's the buzzer. If you would have taken a few, a few more seconds to wrap up your comment, that would be fine.
Okay, just real quickly, okay. Uh, there was a doctor who was at my lab to do research, to look into the Moderna and to figure out what was in it. There are metals in it. There are metals that trace you and the Department of Defense has now patented to trace you. So if you get this vaccine, there are metals in the vaccine that are trace nanom particles that can be programmed, that can trace you. And they, and they can give you, um, social support. This is real. This is the patent, this is the number, the patent of the Department of Defense. Okay, and there's, I have much more here. So this isn't just whether there's a real problem, but also, they keep changing the numbers of people who've died because they changed that also. CDC keeps changing it.
If you have handouts or something, we, we could take a look at that if you wanted to pass those off.
So my point is that we need to take care of the kids because they're going to be walking around with metal. We already know that they have, um, uh, other objects in there that are programmable, that are programmable nanoparticles. We know that. Now we have to prevent kids from getting these and it's destroying them.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. If those are the handouts, we, we could, uh, take copies of those if you like.
Beg your pardon?
If those are the handouts, we, the board can take copies of those.
This is the information, and this is about the vaccine, so how-
I can tell you are. I thank you, Ms. Allen, for the, I smile, but yours is good. Next speaker is Summer Keiki. I apologize if I've pronounced things. Okay, Ms. Keiki.
Is it okay if I just stand here?
That, that's perfectly fine, uh, if you do want to be picked up on camera, you might have to move, I think you're okay. You do have three minutes, Ms. Keiki, go ahead, thank you.
So, I, I spoke to the board not too long ago, I'm sure you remember me, and it came from a system, a ball of nerves that day. And I, I'm not nervous anymore, I know exactly what I want to say, and I hope that you will hear it and it won't fall upon deaf ears or blazed over look. Um, I'm not a scientist, but I do a lot of research as a parent. I do that to make educated decisions. I have a mind capable of making those decisions because I can read and I can kind of decipher what's safe for my child, what's not, what I feel comfortable with, what I don't. Um, we know that vaccines do cause harm, they can. It, it might be in a small percentage in your opinion, it, but it's possible. We know that COVID can kill people, that's possible too. The percentage is also not super, super high if you look at it on an overall spectrum. My concern is that we're taking kids out of school that don't need to be out of school. We have to be looking for alternative solutions. We have to be looking for ways that we can keep kids in school rather than enforcing these mandates. How can we, how can we appease the powers that be and keep kids in school? How can we provide them alternative solutions to stay there? Because I do feel that that should be the ultimate goal, you know what I mean? Because as I have stated last time, these kids come from a wide diversity of environment. School is important for them and they should have a right to be there regardless of vaccination status. And I hate to use this, but it does, it feels like segregation between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. We should be coming together to find real solutions. Regardless of your opinions of vaccines or not, the focus should be on the kids and keeping them in school without having that requirement placed upon them. So I, I do appreciate it, but I have questions. What, and I'm certain, looking at the agenda, you may cover some of the questions that they have. What are you, how are you brainstorming? What are we doing to keep these kids in school and give them their fair right to an education regardless of vaccination status? So thank you, that's, that's all I have for this morning.
Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, next speaker, Janice Edwards.
I don't, I don't need to be on camera. Um, so first off, my name is Janice Edwards. Uh, I'm a parent of three, uh, boys. I have one boy at, um, high school level. And I'm also, uh, an MUHSD employee and, um, this is really hard for me to kind of just even come to because, uh, earlier this week, uh, I got branded on Twitter as a right-wing racist anti-vaxxer. Um, so I'm, I'm also struggling a little bit with that. This is in no way against, uh, any kind of vaccine. All my kids have had all of their vaccines. Um, but, um, my, first and foremost, as a mother, and I will echo a lot of what Ms. Keiki said, as a mother, I am very concerned about, um, and I know that as a district, um, of a public high school, um, we're unfortunately at the mercy of our state government. Um, I do feel a little bit like, almost like we're all being held hostage in a way um, because what is mandated and set down by our state government is unfortunately what we have to abide by and follow. My own kids, um, we have all had COVID, we recently had it in August. Um, and as awful as that was, because I gifted it to my family, um, as awful as it was for my husband and I, my kids came through it with flying colors, they ran the house, they took care of everything, uh, which got me thinking quite a bit about, um, the data with children having it. And, uh, it's interesting that according to the CDC alone, um, in America, we've had five point five and a bunch of numbers, million documented cases of children having COVID between January twenty twenty and October twenty twenty-one. And of those cases of children between the ages of zero and eighteen years, there have only been documented just a little over six hundred deaths that were COVID-related within that age group. And mathematically, I was an English teacher, mathematically, it's a point zero 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 one percent uh, mortality rate for children. So this mandate being handed down to our children is scientifically and statistically unfounded other than, of course, when kids get it and they're doing really well with it, it can be transmitted to adults. Which leads me to my next. Point. I'll go real quick. Um, we have to be tested and I have a ninety-day grace period, but a lot of my colleagues do not. Uh, of that ninety-day grace period that I have, I don't see where, anywhere the data or the reasoning behind after ninety days of me having COVID, all of a sudden my immunity expires. And why people who have the shot back in shots, back in, you know, April, their immunity is still good. So that I would have to go and be tested on my campus during the school hours, uh, in front of all of the students, aside from, I feel like that might violate HIPAA since we can't even discuss who has had COVID on our campus. Um, but I also feel like I'm being discriminated against for choosing to not get a shot and for choosing, or for choosing to decline to stay when data, the CDC, the WHO, and medical professionals everywhere have also said that even those who have, have the shot can also catch and transmit to others. So I thank you for your time, um, and I hope I wasn't random.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Can we get copies of the, um, handouts, too?
Yep.
And that's it for public comment? Did you have a comment, Mr. Plaxton? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Plaxton. Again, if you want to be on camera, then you would need to move over, over here.
So, I just wanted to say a few things. First thing I would like to encourage, obviously, the board is going to be making decisions here, uh, as well as the district. Being a good consumer of information is paramount in an instance like this. Taking radical, uh, I would say conspiracy theories into your, uh, discussion is, is not going to be good. If there are things that are backed up through science, look at them certainly. Secondly, if students get COVID, they may not be as sick as old, decrepit people like us, however. Number one, we don't know the long-term effects. And number two, the COVID virus continuing to spread clearly is a thing that allows the variant to, it's through natural evolution, it wants to survive. So if we can stop this thing, it will stop very. That is pretty much settled science. And I'm not trying to say that people don't have the right. They absolutely do have the right. What I'm saying is they need to consider, and we need to consider, how we can do our best part to make sure that that spread is mitigated, whether that be through vaccinations or continued, uh, masking or continued testing. And I would like to say, testing in front of people is not a HIPAA violation. HIPAA only applies to hospital personnel. So, um, that's pretty much all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just letting you know that if you touch your mask, it, it is contaminated and so it's no longer valid to prove anything. You have to not touch your mask and you have to have an N ninety-five mask. And your interaction that you have with someone, you have to remove that mask and do it again. One mask is not going to work because you're touching it all the time. If you have COVID on your hands, you got no.
Thank you. Any other yellow cards? Okay. Then with that, we'll move to the discussion item. Um, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Pearson.
I just want to remind everyone that this is a board study session, so the folks on the inner square here will be freely speaking to one another. Um, I realize this is an emotional topic, we all realize that, and there are strong opinions, but, uh, we ask that you refrain, um, while we are having this discussion. I sent out a memo, I, I want to start with the, the big picture. Uh, I sent out a memo to, uh, all district stakeholders this week and I, I want to say publicly that, uh, we are coming at this from a big tense point of view. That there are lots of different views on this issue and everyone's views will be respected and that we will do our best to, uh, move forward in a way that keeps our school sites safe and follows the directive, directives or mandates from the state as best we can. We all need to be real about what the future could hold and what I just commented on, the, the big tent philosophy, could, uh, be on a collision course with, uh, a state mandate next, next year. And that's why we're here today, um, to talk about some of those things. And I, I would encourage the board to, um, understand that there is a lot of things that are going to change, uh, in the next six months. I think, uh, the governor, um, made an announcement and when a governor makes an announcement like that, it immediately pushes up the vaccination rate. And it is. But to say that we're going to exclude a, a certain population, um, next year, I don't think there's going to be any board or any superintendent in the state that ultimately, they might be okay with it right now because they're pushing their folks that way. But ultimately, I can't imagine that boards and superintendents in school districts would support, you know, twenty to thirty or forty percent of their students going on IS. That's just not okay. Not okay. That's, that's our job. That's this board's job, that's my job to make sure the students of our community have access to the best public education they can have. That's our job. Now, a small percentage needs to go to IS. We have a small percentage there now. We have a small percentage every year. Um, there are more students there now than there normally is and, and we gave them that option. But the students in our district want to be in in-person school. And so that's, that's how I'm coming at it as the leader of this district. Um, you are the board and you employ me and you give direction. And we haven't had a real direct conversation about this before um, because asking people to mask, asking people to quarantine, social distance, that's one thing. Sending kids to a different program, letting employees go, that's another thing.
Okay. Um, what we have is the, the two sides, and I think you'll, you'll begin speaking to those, right, Mr. Pearson?
Yep.
The two sides of, of the, of the coin here. We've got the, um, uh, requirements for staff, which we're in the middle of, um, currently in place. And then we have requirements for students in which there is a more extended timeline at this point.
Yeah.
So I know you prepared a, a side-by-side document for us, do we want to share?
Yeah, I think it's probably best to start with, um, Mrs. Ballinger and let her explain where we are with, uh, the testing of staff and where we're going. So you're clear on that and can ask any questions you like.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Ballinger. Yeah, so, um, we were required on the, the August eleventh public health order, we were required to, um, collect vaccination status of our employees. And then by October fifteenth, anyone who was not fully vaccinated needed to start weekly testing. So, um, we started that back in August, that collection, and then we started testing, um, on August eleventh to the week of the fifteenth there. Um, we have, of our employees, we have, um, two hundred and thirty-four who need to are not fully vaccinated. But then we have to, um, also test anybody who works with our kids. So, um, like not our normal employees, like our walk-on coaches, student teachers, interns, anybody like that. So that total is four hundred and seven people who need to test on a weekly basis. The testing kind of program that we developed, um, is we hired, um, COVID testing clerks and we created four COVID teams. And those teams, um, are on each site two days a week, um, for, to test employees and then also our close contact students, they can test them also. Um, employees can test, of course, if their convenience is that with those teams, they can test at their own site, they can test at any site. Um, this week, we opened up two days here at the district office, so employees could come here to the district office to test. We also, um, if employees don't feel comfortable testing with our teams, we accept outside tests so they can go get tested on their own and submit those results to, um, HR and we document that. Um, the way we set it up is that only HR knows vaccination status. So when employees go to test at a site, their name and their result is all that's recorded and then that's sent over to HR. So they could, they could have to test because they're fully vaccinated or they could just go and test and the people doing the test and at the site, they wouldn't know the difference. Um, because we're trying to protect that, um, piece of it. We, um, like I said, this is our second week testing. Um, I think of the four hundred and seven, we're at about two hundred people who tested this week.
So the four hundred and seven is the contracted staff and also the walk-on staff total?
Yeah, and also volunteers, walk-on coaches, like, has anybody who works with kids have to be tested or provide their vaccination status?
So four hundred and seven is the number working with another four hundred and seven, you're saying approximately, approximately half-
Tested this week.
Have tested this week?
Yes.
Okay, and the other half have just-
Um, some, some have tested last week and didn't test this week, some have not tested at all.
Okay.
Ms. Ballinger, the, uh, you said they can come to the office, which one of my concerns with the privacy, whether it, whether it's valid people or not, um, we are saying that others will not know who's vaccinated or even if they just decline to answer if they're vaccinated or not. But if we're testing them at, let's say, at their site and others, see, oh, she's going into, or he's going into that room where they test people that are not vaccinated, so that will already, uh, you know, put the spotlight on them and others will figure it out. So I'm glad that you said that they can come here and test because that was one of my things, that can we provide more private testing or can they do their own testing, which you said we do as well? And how is that one, where private testing, is it a, a, a home test or they gotta go to a medical facility or how does that work?
They would need to go somewhere. Right now, we're not accepting the home test because we have no way of knowing who took that test or the validity of that test, so right now, we're not accepting home tests.
Depending on, uh, where they go, is the insurance covered?
Um, I think they cover one test for surveillance testing every certain amount of time, but, um, yeah, that, the testing would be, if they do it out of NUHSD, it would be at their own expense.
But they do have the option to come here, which is a little bit, we're a lot more private than doing it at the site.
Right, and, and I know that principals are going to meet with people this week and we're open. I mean, the, the DO testing site only started this week and that was a result of staff members saying, hey, we don't really want to test on our site, so then we opened up that theater. So we're willing to kind of work with people to help alleviate some of those fears.
Yeah, we're, we're willing to do whatever we need to do at the site to alleviate those concerns.
And just, they don't have to test with, when the COVID team is there. Um, each site has additional trained employees, so the nurses, um, the, the AP over the health office, the athletic director, all those people are also trained to do the testing. So i- if I were, say, an employee that was absent this day, the COVID team was on my campus that week, I could just go in the health office and ask the nurse for it to test me. Um, the, the athletic directors also can do walk-on coaches because they're, the time that they're there isn't always the same time the COVID team is there. So we do, are flexible in that. The COVID teams, those times are just to handle the majority of the testing.
Yeah, because that was one of the concerns from one of the emails I got, maybe it's everybody got, is the privacy of that. So again, I'm glad that we have other options. I know the, the private one may not be the best option, like going to a, on your own because it ends up costing them, but it's there. But hopefully they can come here whenever, and how, uh, when is the district office available to do that?
Um, either Tuesday or Friday.
So just Tuesday and, oh, to be-
It starts at seven thirty in the morning.
So out of the four hundred and seven, you said about half of them have actually tested. This is the, the hard part is, what is the next step for those that are not going to continue to, or not gonna, or do not want to be tested at all?
Um, the sleep principals and supervisors are going to meet with employees who have not tested and try to see if there's another need there that we can figure out.
And then what about the, I know we talked about this, uh, I believe it's in the last meeting, the, uh, medical exemptions or religious exemptions?
For, right now, for the current mandate, there are no exemptions. It's either you're, you're fully vaccinated or you test. It's either you're fully vaccinated or you test.
Thank you.
There's no exemption for testing?
Yes, you're either fully vaccinated or you test. I guess testing is your exemption.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I want to say that it's fully vaccinated, and I use that term fully vaccinated or test because some people are in the process of getting vaccinated, and so they just have to test until they're fully vaccinated. Some people declined to state because they didn't want to share that information, so then they have to test. So I mean, the people who have to test, there's a variety of reasons they might be testing.
And as part of the testing, there's a waiver that is signed, is that correct?
That's with our testing company that provides the test, they do have a waiver that when you register online, you have to.
Yeah.
I think that anywhere you get a test, other than on your own, there's a waiver.
And that's, so that's through a third party, and that is completed every time they test or it's a one-time waiver?
No, only the time that they register, the first time.
What is that waiver? What is that thing?
Oh, I don't know exactly, but it's about...
I don't know specifically, but I think it's probably a standard liability waiver that the third party is asking that the people sign, employees sign.
It also allows the results to be shared with the health department.
Oh, that's a good point. Okay. All right. Any questions?
Ms. Ballinger, with employees, with the four hundred and seven you have right now, how many of those are non-contracted employees, like the walk-ons and?
Well, two hundred and thirty-four are contracted employees.
Two thirty-four are contracted, okay. So those two thirty-four, how many are not or haven't tested or did one test and not the other?
I have been gone through that list.
Okay. But that conversation is gonna start.
I have seen it all together, yes.
Okay. And then those that are non-contracted, like, what are our steps? I mean, as much as I hate it, that's gonna, it may impact student activities, the student, you know, just extracurriculars, I mean, they're walk-ons.
Correct.
You know, and if they don't want to follow at least a testing mandate that we have in place now, I mean, that conversation needs to happen soon. As much as I hate to lose employees or those that are helping student programs, but, I mean, if we're expecting full-time employees to follow this requirement, but we're saying you're walk-ons, you two hundred plus don't need to.
Yeah, that is definitely right. The walk-on and the non-employees, their time with us will be shorter than our current employees because you're not gonna test, we can't have you here because that's what the mandate says. So that's our one population there.
Okay.
So after next week, then subs will start being deactivated to have access with us, for example.
And we're already having a shortage of subs, so in turn, it's gonna impact costs.
Correct. That's a positive problem, yes.
And they can also bring in just a negative test, also, from a personal provider?
Yeah, anybody, they just send it to Brooke in HR, they don't even have to give it to the site, they can just do this straight to her.
It just needs to be updated to be consistent?
The date, their name, and the results.
Where are you in conversations with our CSDA and our DTA in terms of the testing and the vaccination? I mean, I'm sure that they're having a voice somewhere. I know we've got Mr. Pusk here, we've got Mrs. Edwards here, and it seems like they're on, you know, obviously on opposite end of the spectrum here, you know? So where are they as far as dialogue with the entire unions? And Miss McCutcheon, Miss McCutcheon's here too.
Miss McCutcheon, yes.
I don't want to speak for them. I'll take a shot at it, though, and jump in if I'm off-base. I believe they have clearly communicated this expectation to those they represent. I have not heard anything from either union, you know, that we're going about this in a, you know, too aggressive way. I think we're doing the opposite. We understand that there is concern, and we're giving our employees time to think it through. We're starting with supervisors and principals next week, and we'll work through that one, and then I'm sure there's going to be a few left, and then that will get moved on to Mrs. Ballinger the following week. And we will work through those issues, and then around, you know, the first week of November, we will, second week of November, we'll see where we are and have to start making some calls. But you're right, it's going to affect our extracurriculars if walk-on coaches, you know, choose not to get tested, and we are already having an issue with subs. So any time you throw a mandate on people, this is gonna happen.
And just to clarify, Mr. Pusk, I'm sure you're speaking on behalf of the DTA, and Mrs. Edwards speaking on behalf as a parent?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that your conversation with us today was on behalf of the DTA?
My conversation is on behalf of staying in school. That is my conversation. And absolutely, I do speak to the DTA, and I would like to point out that I don't think that she and I are on opposite sides.
Okay. Do you want to clarify?
I really disagree with that statement.
Okay.
We're on the same side, we just have slightly different points of view.
Okay. And I believe that we all received a phone call from Mr. DeSalvo in terms of, you know, what's going on, I believe it's Fresno or Clovis Unified, in terms of possible exemptions and what's going on there. So I'm not sure where we are at, if we want to take that approach.
We're looking at that.
Okay. Sounds good.
And I want to point out the four hundred and seven, that includes all the walk-on coaches. Walk-on coaches are kind of a fluid list of people, that some of them may not be working with our kids right now, and so, you know, we're getting ready to change seasons here, so that number could go up or that number could go down, so that walk-on coach number is a little more fluid than some of our other numbers.
Just to clarify what Mr. Lofus meant by the Clovis comment, Clovis is meeting with employees that are concerned about testing. Most employees are not, don't really have an issue with testing itself, they have an issue with the government mandating it, and if they know they're going to get an exemption, they'll be more likely to cooperate. And I believe that's what the reference was to Clovis. So actually having the exemptions present so they can see what they look like, whether they would fit under them, ultimately, that makes people feel better.
And that's an exemption to the vaccination?
That's correct.
But not the testing.
There is no exemption to the testing.
Right. So we end up back at the testing spot, right? And Mrs. Ballinger, I know that you haven't gone through all the numbers, but out of the, we have two hundred and thirty-four contracted employees not vaccinated, and approximately one hundred and seventy-three walk-ons, interns, so forth. Which is fluid, especially in a district this size, that's gonna change, gosh, you know, by the week. But could you guess what number in each category is not testing, or most of the people not testing, coming from the walk-on?
A large portion is coming from the walk-on, that, I mean, it kind of also varies by site, but a large portion is our walk-on.
Thank you.
I just met with the athletic directors. We hope that part of the problem with a walk-on is accessibility to the test. They're not on our campuses until they come to practice with the kids. So the athletic directors have committed to go out and personally see them and test them before their practice. So we'll find out more if it's an issue of accessibility.
Yeah, many of them don't even read their emails, so.
That was my next question. How was, how this was communicated to them? Is it, I mean, were they sent, you know, letters, emails, and?
So, yes, we did emails and we did letters also.
Yeah. Thank you.
The other thing is, I mean, you tap sort of under a bubble to not know this is all going on, right? But it's possible that some of these folks are vaccinated and just have not turned in their card.
Absolutely.
That's happening every day. Our list is getting smaller because people are, either they declined to state originally, and now that I got, I don't care, I'll let you know, or they're getting vaccinated, or they just never got around to it, and now that they have to actually test, they're sending it in. So, yeah, every day that the number is coming down a little bit.
What is the process to show proof of vaccination? Is it an online submitter, or do they have to bring their card somewhere?
They can send a picture of their card to, it's to Brooke Thompson, Brooke Tilling, all of that information, that the original Google form had where you can upload it, but then it got overloaded, like just became too much data on that form, so that people are just sending her a picture of their card. They can also stop by and show their card, and she just check it off.
Yeah, they all show it to their supervisors?
No, no, all of the status is handled in HR because that, I mean, we wanted to keep that closed.
Got it.
So the, where we are right now with this practice is principals are meeting with employees, you know, to converse with them. Walk-ons will be approached by their athletic directors to get more information and possibly test them on the site. So that's where we are right now, and then where do we go after that, once we get?
As we move through next week, you know, let's say we cut it in half or more, hopefully we end up with under a hundred, hopefully it's.
Hopefully.
Under twenty, for Mrs. Ballinger's sake, that the district office will need to meet with and explain where we're ultimately going.
Ms. Ballinger, you said we have four COVID teams. Can you tell me what their day consists of?
There are three point seven five-hour employees, and so they go to different sites, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, and they have a time that they're there, and they just test employees who come in.
So all they do, their job is to test, that's it?
Yep. They're short-term employees for this school year, and their job is just to test. Each team has a lead, and that lead enters in the information into the system for the testing, which then we run a report in HR, and we put it on our spreadsheet.
So we have designated areas where they go?
Yeah, each site has an area for the COVID team.
So in the four teams, how many people are in each team?
There, we hired twenty-four, so six people on each team, and we fully, we have them all fully staffed now.
Thank you.
And at the same time, if those teams are there, there are also site people there to support them too. So the nurse, the AP, the different people are there to support them all.
I have another question, I don't know. Well, just to confirm or just clarify, one of the concerns was that everyone will need to show proof of vaccination in the future. Is that correct and incorrect? I thought we could still say, I refuse to answer, and you would be considered unvaccinated either way, but are we going to require that?
Yeah, no. We're still doing as you stated.
Got it.
Anything else?
Yeah, for clarification on my behalf, for CIF, what is the rule as far as masks indoors?
For basketball?
Volleyball, basketball, whatever that may be, just any indoor sport.
The CIF just sent out a statement to all schools that for basketball season, it was up to their local health department on whether a mask was a choking hazard. And I realize that is laughable. Anyone that has played basketball understands that. It's highly likely Merced County will state that it's a choking hazard, and as they did with volleyball. However, CIF was not on the same page with the state health department on that issue, and we had to finish the season. I think about halfway through, we had to go back to wearing the mask because CIF stated they wanted all schools to do that.
And then as far as the fans, I'm thinking more just the general public indoors. So my understanding was that we were gonna be far than wearing masks?
Masks indoors, yeah. Students are present, yeah.
And I know that it's a hard job for ADs that are out there in charge of that and trying to police that, but I know that probably half of these people that are attending these games aren't wearing a mask, you know? So, I mean, I don't know what our protocol's gonna be moving forward. Are we gonna enforce it or not? Because we're going fifty-fifty, so it's like, which way are we playing as a board or as a district on mandating mask-wearing inside or not wearing, or as you choose?
Well, my advice to you is to follow the law.
Right.
Which is what our current practice is.
Correct. So as far as enforcing it, as far as, I mean, our ATs or APs that are there, are they gonna say, hey, put your mask on, or you're gonna ask a leave?
I don't, look, we have, I have seen older folks at games that when they need to take their mask off, they go and stand in the corridor, they go up on the top of the bleachers. But as far as I know, if they're in the crowd there, I mean, we're going to, we're not gonna be crazy about it, but that's the expectation.
As they enter the facility?
Yeah.
Masking in once you sit down, okay.
Okay.
As we did here, do we have masks at the entrances?
At the games, I'd be glad to see that.
I believe there's a box everywhere, yeah.
Do we want to?
We can move on, yes.
Live on to the?
Yes. Mr. Wymer, if you would like to, Mrs. Roebach, do we have extra copies for the?
There's some over there, like.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballinger.
Mr. Wymer, you're on.
So very quickly, I'll go over what you have in front of you, which you are not going to find on here are answers. You're basically going to be finding questions. So it gives you the possible scenarios and the things that we need to be thinking about. It gives you some possible ways in which the district might move, but again, there are no answers on the page, there are just discussions, discussion topics. We've gone through what the current testing is, Mrs. Ballinger handling the testing for staff and handling the testing for students, which is basically testing for activities, and then if you're a close contact, you can test and not have to quarantine if you're not vaccinated. So those are our current testing situations right now. The things that are going on, May tenth, we have the Pfizer get emergency use for twelve to fifteen-year-olds. On October first, twenty twenty-one, the governor announced vaccine mandate upon full approval for in-person attendance. The expected start date, that is July first. Going to make some clarifications on that because there's a whole lot of caveats to that particular press conference and statement. Two pieces, the governor cannot make a mandate that is like the current mandate that we have for vaccination. He can only make a mandate with religious and personal belief exemption. That's the way the law's written right now. If he doesn't, or is through regulation, CDPH, or something like that for students, he has to have those exemptions in there. If the legislature acts between now and the end of the year, they can add it to the regular list of vaccinations that are required, at which point the personal exemption would come out because there are not personal exemptions for the current vaccines that students require. So if it stays as the governor's order, that's gonna be one thing, the exemptions will have to stay. If it becomes a legislative issue, then it becomes just like any of the other MOCs and measles and TDAF and the other vaccination requirements that we have. There is no legislation that's been introduced, obviously there's discussions, but there has no, been legislation introduced to do that. Also, even though the governor said we would follow a similar timeline between staff and students, the vaccination law is applied to students. When you start talking about staff, there are a whole lot of other issues that get involved, and that usually is going to come through us from Cal OSHA, who, because that's not saying at the school, that's saying we're a business, and we're a business who has employees. So we fall into both worlds. We fall under the regulations and information that comes out for schools, but we also have to follow the laws and regulations that comes out because we're a business and we have employees. And so you have this conversation about schools over here, but Cal OSHA can come in and do a different rule on the other side that's not necessarily part of the public press release, and that's the one that guides what we have to do because we are an employer. So as we go down, you're gonna see a little bit difference between where you complete the potential for staff versus students. The first one would be if they require vaccine and test exemption, which is currently the status that we're on. You can see what that would mean if we continue to do the testing, but we had to go for both sides, if we had to expand our testing to include students who were not turning in a vaccination card, the estimate that we got from the company that does it, LA Unified right now, is about a million dollars a month. I said a month. To do that kind of testing, where you would be testing all of the activities that we currently do, but you would have to include not just the staff testing that Miss Ballinger's doing right now, but if you had to include students who were given an exemption in that testing. We would have to ramp up what she's doing right now on the staff side tenfold, and it would be a major... and it would be a major destruction. It's doable on the staff side, and we can see that it's already causing issues and some disruptions of how you get walk-on coaches and everything over on that side. If you have to test five hundred to a thousand students on every campus once a week, how do you do that? You know, you can't do it during the day, because then they don't go to class. Are you going to pull a kid out and rotate? This week, you're going to come out of first period, next week, you're going to come out of second period. Do you do it only in the morning or only after school, at which point you're trying to get five hundred to a thousand students through within an hour? That's not real feasible either. So the ability to do that has a ton of logistic issues that will be extremely disruptive if that's the case, where you have the vaccine and they require the testing exemption. So that's the first level that we could get into, and again, it's a financial burden, and it is also a major logistical issue if that applies to students. I guess, do you want to take questions on each level, or do you want to hear all the levels and then just go from there?
Are there any questions on this one? There might be as we go through and kind of compare and contrast, I think.
Well, I'm sorry, I do have, like, on that, what you're saying here, we're talking about if we go to where students, we require students to be vaccinated or tested.
Correct.
All right, so if, let's say, what percentage of students say, or actually not them, but their parents say, "We don't want our kids vaccinated," then we have to test them weekly?
We don't, there is no order right now that says that, but if the governor follows what he's doing right now with staff and does the same thing with students, knowing that the legislature does not pass a bill putting it on the regular vaccine requirement, if he then has a lot of exemptions, then if he does what's going on with staff right now and says, "Okay, but if you're getting an exemption, you have to test," then we have to move to this level. If he doesn't put that in there, if we just give the exemptions and you're either vaccinated or you're not, then we just stay where we're at right now. We stay at that very top level, where we're only testing the staff, and we don't have to add any additional things. We're only going to test for activities and for the quarantine. But if they add that, which is what the governor has done with the staff, and if he says, "Here's the exemptions, and I know how big they are, therefore, I gave you exemptions, but you're going to do this, you're going to test," then that moves us to this next one. And that, that one probably is the most disruptive to schools. Some of these others are very disruptive to students and individual students. This is the most logistically disruptive one, trying to test five hundred to a thousand students every week on a campus. Very, very difficult.
So you would rather test all students? Like, it's all or nothing?
I am not going to say what I would rather do. I think logistically, it would be easier to say, "I'm going to test all students," because you would block, you'd have to block off time where you know nothing else is going on. Where if I have seven periods a day and a kid is in seven classes, how do you pell out half of the kids from the class? And does the class shut down? It's a logistical nightmare. And I'm not sure the state cares, but it would be a logistical nightmare. The other one, on the other side, which would probably not be an option for students, because students have the right to be in their education, so if we have a testing requirement, we have to take care of that. We have to make sure that's possible. On the other side, if we had the vaccine and the test exemptions, and we still have a large number of four hundred or whatever, we would have to start making that conversation of whether or not we reduce the amount of testing we're doing, because the testing that we're doing with HR right now is probably going to cost us anywhere between a hundred and seventy-five and three hundred thousand dollars for the year. How long do we continue to do that? And do you do that for another year? Do you do that for two years? How long do we want to do that? Or do we shrink that time, and if you can't make the one or two days that we offer in the evenings after school for you to come in and test, then you would do it on your own, which then puts the burden and the cost back on the employee. So that would be the conversation you would have to have at that point on how you would move forward on the testing on that side. Luckily, for about two more years, two and a half more years, we do still have the federal money with those types of things. So if any of this runs more than two years, that changes the conversation completely, because you're no longer using COVID as a business money for those. So if we go down to the next level, which is where the governor would like to be, but he really can't, I don't believe, do this one without the legislature's input, but we'll see where this one goes, which would basically be vaccine, and if you want an exemption, you have to go on independent studies. Again, I don't think that the governor has the authority to do that. I think that would have to go through the legislature on the student side. But if they did that, that could create a whole bunch of issues for us. Where we basically have independent studies, which runs about two hundred students, we would probably be talking about having a full school of two thousand or more students on independent studies.
And just to put that in perspective, that's closing down El Capitan next year, and opening up El Capitan online in six months.
You're using that as an example of equivalency.
Equivalency, the number, yes, yes.
Well, but I'm going to add the logistics in there where that becomes unfortunately something that would have to go on a table, because if you get to the number where you're talking about two thousand to twenty-five hundred students on an independent high school, again, the students are online, they're not coming to an actual campus, but you still have the same amount of staff that a regular high school has. So now you have a hundred to a hundred and twenty teachers and support staff who are now in that independent studies environment as well. Where do you house them? That's the same number of staff that happens on any one campus right now. And if you have ten to fifteen of them on every different campus, then how do you manage that program? Because you're going to probably have all of the kids in one high school, independent high school, so how do you supervise fifteen teachers and other support staff that are at different campuses and still make that one cohesive receiving group very difficult as well?
And location.
The logistics of that, you know, if we had to do it at that level, you don't need a lot of those staff. That's the bottom line. And so when I tell you there's going to be lots of changes, I think all of this is starting to sink in to CSJA at the state level and our teachers' union, and it's going to have an effect, a negative effect on jobs and staffing at schools. So I really, I really believe things will change as we move through the winter and early spring.
What are student numbers right now? Do we have that as far as back, non-back?
I would say, well, student minus is just parents volunteering in the and we're not collecting it unless they volunteer. We're around fourteen hundred students that are
That are vaccinated.
About a twelve thousand, approximately?
Yeah, yeah.
We're at twelve thousand, right, students? So we were like ten?
Ten thousand, two hundred.
Yeah, so we're about ten percent.
No, ten thousand, two hundred is what we're hoping for daily attendance. So that's about ninety percent.
Probably around eleven thousand.
Probably close to eleven thousand. Ten thousand, two hundred is our daily, average daily attendance target, not our enrollment target. So unfortunately, that was the student side. If you shift to the other side, on the staff side on that one, you don't necessarily need the legislature to act on this one. The governor probably through Cal OSHA could say that the vaccine exemption on staff side is you don't work with students. That wouldn't have to go through legislation like it would for the students. That could simply come through Cal OSHA. So while you're having that different conversation of your students, on the staff side, that could happen without legislation. And I basically think that the governor would probably lean that way, and there have been comments that he would lean that way. Would do, instead of the test, instead of the vaccine and the testing exemption, he would probably rather see it be, you're either vaccinated or you don't work with students. That's your exemption, not testing. And at that point, the question becomes how many students are moving to IS. If the number of students moving to IS and the number of teachers who don't want to be vaccinated equal each other, then that becomes your independent studies, and everything works out. If that's not true, if you have a higher number of staff than you need for the IS number of students on independent studies, then you have to have the conversations of how much money are we willing to spend to have five kids per one independent study teacher rather than twenty-five? Or when do you start having to reduce the number of staffing to match what actually you do need on that side? And that's, and that's for the teaching side of it. When you have students who move over, what are the number of jobs you have for classified staff that aren't on campuses? And what can you do to make alternative arrangements to make sure they're not there when students are there? I don't know what the answer to that particular one is, but if you say, "I'm a custodian or I'm a campus liaison, and I'm not going to be vaccinated, and my option is to work at independent high school," well, you don't need custodians and liaisons necessarily at independent high school. So how do you handle that one? That one gets very, very complicated.
Well, not working with students is very, well, right now, it's not even defined. It would probably be loosely defined. You know, what does that mean? Does that mean you're not on a site at all? Because not working with students directly versus not being on campus where students are. So there's a lot of, a lot of question marks, obviously.
And again, and that's going to be even more complicated, because let's say, a custodial job or maybe even an office job that could be done at different hours. Maybe you do those types of jobs when students aren't there, but the jobs that directly deal with students, a cafeteria worker, a liaison, a paraprofessional, you can't do those jobs if you're not with students.
And that's the majority, margin of jobs. Kids are going to go through the office, they're going to be walking around campus, they're going to be, you know, doing what they need to do.
And then the last one, which I don't think is even an option for students in any way, should perform, but if you have the vaccine and no exemption, then we need to call our lawyers and get the recommendations on behalf of that. At that point, you basically would be letting people go, get the mandate.
That's the line that's drawn, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for the rundown.
So again, I provided no answers, just lots and lots of thoughts, lots and lots of questions, the different pieces that could go in place and things that we need to be thinking about as we see how this rolls out over the next three or four months.
Yeah, and that's mostly on the student side, where there's, I mean, right now, where we sit with staff is kind of what we were talking about before, was going back to those conversations and then providing the opportunities, as many opportunities as we can for testing in a way that's comfortable.
Yeah, but it is the student issue that's going to decide the staff issue.
And I personally believe is that when we do get the full authorization, not the emergency use, but the full authorization for the twelve and older group, at that point, people will announce, okay, July first is when the student one starts. That's when you'll see the details also coming out of what Cal OSHA is going to do on the staff side. So that all of those requirements would start at the same time. But again, that doesn't mean it will be the same requirement, that it just started at the same time.
If, if I may, just trying to put all this together, and through COVID, there's been very many dances we've had to do, right? District office here on weekends, planning on how we're going to implement something, and then we took a wide left turn, right? And, you know, we've had to shift and balance and react, and it's been incredibly difficult. And I think our district has done an incredible job of doing our best effort to keep everyone safe and students engaged and in school as much as possible. And this feels like another one of those if-then-when scenarios, and I very much appreciate the proactive approach to try and get in front of it and have everyone understand what some scenarios might be. But I don't think, I mean, I know we're not making any decisions today. I don't think we actually even can, because we don't know what we're exactly reacting to, other than to say, as a board, as a district, as a community, we support the safety of our students and our staff. And I think we are hearing people ask for choice. No one likes to be told, "You have to do this," right? So I don't want to speak for everyone, but, I mean, I know we will have extremes, absolutely. We will have people who are absolutely opposed to any portion requiring anyone to be vaccinated or tested. And we will have people who don't want testing, don't want vaccinations on it. And then we will have people that will wish that everyone was absolutely vaccinated. And I think we're seeing, hearing that we are more in favor of a middle-of-the-road approach, which gives everyone a choice, right? If you are not vaccinated, you test. And if you are opposed to that option, then independent studies is another option. But we are not right here today saying, "We are going to mandate something above and beyond what the governor is saying." And I just, I kind of want to
Absolutely.
Play up the listen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that.
You summarized it. Well, that's how cabinet is thinking, and I don't want to speak for all the board members, but you spoke well for yourself.
So if anyone feels incredibly different from that, you know, I, I think, yeah, I just wanted to put that out there. That's how I hear it, that's how I feel. And I am very much in favor of keeping our safes, our sites, our students and our staff safe, and doing that with dignity, grace, respectfulness, as I think the district is doing and offering many different scenarios. But you're either vaccinated or you test. And that's for right now with staff. And then we have some different scenarios to play with. We don't know exactly what that looks like, but appreciate the outline, not just, I mean, the finances are one thing. They're horrific, but it's enacting some of this and the bottlenecks, and how do you actually do this in a humane kind of a way?
And I think some of the, some of the districts have jumped the gun and have made have made decisions and then have to go back on the decisions they made after getting so much latched back. So we've got to look at those things and then see what we need to do and not jump the gun too soon, along with some of the districts that are being sued right now for jumping the gun. So we've got to learn from that and make tough decisions. I'm sure we all have a story of friends or family, either way. So it's, they're tough decisions, and we get a lot of feedback from staff and parents. I'm sure all of us do, and you're going to get a lot sooner, maybe haven't already. But, but these are tough decisions, and we got to weigh everything and look at other districts, what's going on and what's happened and what they've done and what they have to redo because of, because they jumped the gun. So I agree with what you said.
And be well-informed, you know, is one of her jobs too, as I think one of the speakers stated, so. But I think that was, well, well put. Mr. Kutchin, did you?
Okay, so just out of curiosity, with the two hundred and thirty-four staff, I want to know how many of those staff were classified?
She can get to that.
Okay, and then I feel like you guys are going to look this roundtable and everything, because the right decision is going to come out. I like the idea that you guys are trying to weigh everything and trying to meet people halfway. And you're right, when you're told, when somebody's told to do something, it doesn't work. But yeah, I just wanted to know how many of those people are classified, that's all.
Thank you.
So I just, just to be clear, we'll continue on this current track, how public you how public you want that to be.
What do you mean? Do we have a choice?
Well, there are legislatures that are, some of the local legislators that feel exactly the way we do. We're going to need to get ahead of this, which is why we're here. And I think we, one of the reasons why we've done well the last 18 months is because we are proactive. But the governor and the, the state, the public health need to hear from districts like us, which means the message needs to go forward from me and others. And I, I don't want to be the face of anything, but I, I want the board, I want the board not to be surprised, you know, if I feel the need to do something. Meaning, meaning write an op-ed, testify at the state legislature on the, on the effects of, of this. I mean, because my, my concern, I, I realize, you know, you have the vaccine mandate. My concern is kids being in school in person, period.
Well, I think we might all agree, and again, I don't want to speak for everyone, but that we need to, you know, take action and, and direction in the best interest of our staff and students. You know, like you said, we need our kids at school. We need, we need our staff here. And if our voice needs to be heard, then maybe we should be speaking.
Ms. Johnson, as far as the kids, is, is it about 30 kids and staff for, for a week that are testing positive?
Oh, it's just very, like Friday we had 270 that tested at Golden Valley, that was just kids.
Positive.
Oh.
Oh, no, no. Oh, no, no, whoa.
So sorry.
Yeah.
Do you have the numbers?
Yes, I believe this week there's 29 active positive cases with students. And with staff, I believe the number is eight. I have that much.
And that's district-wise, right? So, so we're still talking, you know, we're talking about 11,200 kids plus another thousand employees. So we're talking about 12,200 people. That number is 30 per, per, per week, correct? And then we do our contract tracing and so the percentages, and I applaud the efforts of everybody because obviously the mask mandate has, has been working and kind of minimized this, you know, so that number doesn't look like, oh my God, Mercy Union is not doing their job because these kids are, I mean, there's going to always be a positive case until this thing gets, gets, gets controlled. But I think the job that's been done as far as what, what the mask requirement has lessened that and the percentage is that much lower. So I know that we all got the email from Mrs. Rogers in terms of what other districts and how their numbers are much lower than MUHSB. So obviously you start to look at, okay, what actually is our percentage? You know, is it, is it 2% because there's less than ours? And are, are we not doing a better job of testing or just cases?
I think you're doing an excellent job with that.
I think so too, I think so too.
And that was my question because of that email, how do we compare? But I was going to ask that right now, but.
After your, your finish.
Tyler Morgan, I'm an employee at El Capitan, so thank you very much. So to think about what we were just saying there with that thought is that on one hand, the board and, and the district is thinking far ahead of, of giving parents or giving students this choice. But listening to what Mr. Peterson said, I mean, it is shocking. I mean, we're talking about a school the size of El Capitan being online. The fundamental problem that I see with that is a school district, a society, a community of the black and white water fountain, of discriminating against a school the size of El Capitan. That is alarming. I mean, so yes, congratulations if we give these parents and students a choice. But what is that choice? That choice is a choice to discrimination, in my opinion. I, I would be very concerned about that and I would be very, I, I would try to stop that at all costs. I would try to avoid that if, if any possible step that you guys could.
So just to be clear, we need to be proactive now so that doesn't happen. And because once things go into law, then, then we're on the collision course, right?
So if you're asking, do we need to be more vocal in what we need to see those things not happen in order to keep our kids in school?
Yeah, I'm telling you, there are districts organizing, there are boards organizing around the state right now to make their voices hea- heard. And I for one believe we need to participate in that.
And this is also where everyone needs to voice their opinion at, correct?
Sure, I know where I'm working here.
The state level, yeah.
Yeah, we have to follow that. Someone back there.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Carly Irish and I have two students in the Mercy Union High School district right now. But I would just like to speak out and applaud Superintendent Peterson for talking about going that next level. I think that absolutely has to be done. I'm sure most of you are aware, maybe you're not. In SB 277 pass, the state of California lost 56,000 children that did not return to the school district because of the mandate that was put in place. You're looking at a much, much bigger number if this mandate goes into effect. You absolutely need to start speaking with Adam Gray and Senator Cavanaro and reaching out to those people because we do not have people and authorities going to be legislated, reading and speaking out. They need to. You have Senator Pan up there making these rules and Governor Newsom following them along with him, stating that this is what's best because I have a health director here telling me that's what's best. They also need to hear about the negative impacts that are absolutely going to happen. I like that you have these different options here, but the one thing that wasn't spoken about because we kind of just passed it was that very last one. And that absolutely needs to be talked about because we have already pulled our eighth grader out of the elementary district after 277 pass. We didn't even think about an independent study because it wasn't offered to us. So the funds that she was getting for the elementary school district, we, we removed those from you guys. Can you imagine the number of parents that don't even go that independent study route and that absolutely just pull their kids from the district? Think about those costs alone there as well. But I applaud you so, for, for wanting to take that step and speaking out. And I think that getting the hold of our legislatures, our legislative representatives, excuse me, and meeting with them and talking with them and seeing what, what they have in mind or what their thoughts are is a, is a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Dr. Wymer, Ms. Johnson, if you, if you can clarify for me, this, this mandate is going to impact any school in the state of California, public and private? Or just public?
It's going to impact every school in California, but only private schools that observe that the state has authority over them.
Like a charter?
Yeah. But in Stone Ridge, you know, when you're a private school, you have that option. I mean.
And that's, that's been a lot of the dialogue.
Yeah, you can choose to follow what the state mandate is or not because there's no enforcement mechanism at, at that point.
Why do the parents need to speak?
At this particular meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, we had public comment as we, before we, we began the discussion.
You guys already had public comments?
We did, yes.
Well, you guys are public servants and you guys work for me. So I'm here late because you guys didn't even put the address for me. And I would like it's an opportunity to speak, please.
Go ahead.
As legality, oh, sorry, am I supposed to tell you who I am? I am a citizen of the United States of America. I'm not Mexican-American, I am only American. As to the legality of the mandate, one major point is informed consent. No one can tell anyone what will happen to them three years from now. No one can tell anyone what will happen to the physical development of those to take it before puberty. And there is also the case for naturally acquired immunity, which is still being ignored or discredited, coupled with other treatments and medications being ignored or discredited, creating a certain monopoly on healthcare. Also, I'm here today to talk about the first amendment, the right to assemble, which means my kids are citizens and all these adults that work here who are employees are also citizens of the USA. Therefore, they have that right, they have all the rights in the Constitution. And the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the United States. And many of our legislators and governmental leaders are ignoring that fact and bastardizing the Constitution and turning it into trash. They are not acknowledging our rights. I'm also here to make sure that all of you listen that these rights are, are rights and that you guys should not infringe. I am also here to tell you that these mandates aren't laws and infringes on my children's First and Fourteenth Amendment, the right to refuse any form of medical equipment or medical treatment. The masks are medical equipment, that is why they are called PPE. The vaccines haven't been out long enough and the long-term effects aren't known. And unless you are going to sign a form to cover my kids or the employees and all side effects 100% to, so that we have the right to refuse and saying that we can't is discrimination. So my kids under the Constitution have the right to refuse any, and so do the employees of any district. Any, any governmental employee has the right also to refuse and all medical equipment or medical treatment because I am their mother and I know my Constitution and my children's health. My doctor can only make suggestions and so is the law. The, the president can't tell me what medicine I have to take. He does not know my body. It's my body, my choice. The tyranny needs to stop. Breathing is a God-given right. When the masks are on, people get dizzy and it's just not as healthy air as it is without the mask. And also people get sick easier with the mask on, especially because I heard you guys earlier, somebody said that when you touch the mask, then you're touching everything else and then you're just fighting the germs even worse. Now make this a choice or parents, I mean, and my children and staff and doing another sit-out till the board realize that without kids to teach, they won't have any funding. With our kids, they lose all the funding, they need to listen. And you guys all need to listen to us because you guys are all public servants and so are Adam Gray and also is Newsom and also the President Biden is our public servant. They serve us, not the other way around. We are not their puppet. They don't get to dictate to us. That's what the War of 1776 was about, having freedom. That's what the Tea Party was about, the government overreach of our rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
What was our impact on Monday, this replied?
We'll probably be able to run it on Monday. The issue becomes, I'd give this one to Sam too, but like, we're, we're a little bit harder to tell what attendance is in an elementary school because the elementary school has only 30 kids in one class to take roll one. We take roll seven times. And then that has to be verified before it goes into an all-day code. And then once it goes into an all-day code, then we can run the reports and get the numbers. That usually takes about three days. The numbers were higher on Monday, so it's taking longer. So probably by Thursday or Friday, they did have the numbers, so we can run that for them.
It was higher, but not significantly.
What about yesterday?
There was impact, El Cap was probably impacted the most. I think they had 15 staff out in six classes or so per period in the theater. So yeah, there was impact with staff.
And obviously they were talking, but that's not what's best for kids, so.
So are we in consensus on the direction that Mr. Peterson is asking for?
And I think just to clarify, what you, what you're saying there is if the legislature doesn't act, where we're at or the first option is as far as it goes. If the legislature acts, then we go to the bottom one. So what you're saying is advocacy to make sure we don't get to that bottom.
Well, yeah, advocating for what we feel is in the best interest for our staff and students to keep them.
Yeah. And like I said, I, I really believe we're at the beginning of understanding this and the effects of this and other districts are. And as we move through the winter months, people are going to start taking surveys and they're going to start realizing just how many students they're talking about in every district. And that's going to change some minds.
Tiffany, uh, we, we allow, she didn't give her name, but was there anyone else that we should allow since we had, if anyone else that came in later wants to talk?
Yeah, I do, I do, like just mentioned one thing I forgot, is that the NURM work code? To not force us to take.
You, you had your time to comment.
We just said anyone out there that was not, like, I think she came in later.
Yeah, so.
But that's up to our president here.
Um, the president does work for me though. He works for all of us.
We all do. We all do, and I think we're on your, I think we're on your side. I don't know if you were listening to the meeting, but.
Um, I was able to catch some of it, thank you.
Yeah, just trying to make sure that we can run a civil, a civil discussion is, is what our, our goal is.
Oh, I'm just speaking off loud side to make sure everybody hears me.
You were heard, ma'am, thank you. Okay.
Seth Medoffin, formerly at Water, now at El Capitan.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. If we're going to do this, let's go ahead and set the, the three minutes.
So I'm blessed to teach AV Government and honors economics at Outwater and now at El Capitan High School, so 18th year of teaching. But thank you for your time, got to catch you guys online. So I think one of the big challenges is, one of the groups not really represented here is there was a group of about 40 teachers who wrote a letter to the DTA asking them to, to kind of step in on some of these issues. And the DTA basically said that they were not going to get involved in this. So kind of giving tacit consent to what's going on. I think some of the concerns with some of the mandates, particularly that we're going through right now with the testing, is that it essentially, you know, ignores the science that anyone that is not vaccinated and vaccinated, anyone can still get the disease, can still pass the disease along. And then the fact that we're not testing students is basically what I'm saying. We're going to, you know, allow the state to discriminate and pick on a certain group of teachers, and particularly those that are either declining the state or those that, or not vaccinated. So I, I just would love to see in the future, as we go forward, I know there's just, we're just beginning to wrap our minds around so many of these mandates. Is more discussion on whether or not these mandates are lawful? I mean, they're mandates, we recognize the mandates have come from the Department of Health. But whether or not they're lawful, and I think we have a duty to decide whether or not we're going to follow them, regardless of what the statements are. I just would love to wrestle through that together, you know, as a community. Because if all we're going to do is just put into place, and I heard this a little bit when I was watching online, is it felt like, how are we just going to do what the state tells us to do? Not, how are we going to do what is right, what is lawful, what is constitutional? So, you know, above all of this, of course, is the Constitution. And obviously there's different interpretations, but I just would love to see us wrestle with that as a board and as a community more, is that having, having that above all of this, you know, being the most important thing, so. But yeah, thank you for your time. I, I see that there's a number of teachers that are vaccinated that don't want to comply with having to turn over their health information. And then there are a number that are concerned about the vaccine, don't have it and feel like they're being singled out by the testing. And that by complying with that, you know, they feel like that the district would be complying with an unlawful and kind of a, kind of a targeting or discrimination of sorts. So in, in classroom testing, where like Outwater Elementary allows, I think would go a long ways to alleviating some of the concerns that they feel like they're being kind of singled out and inconvenienced. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for not to talk.
One thing that we, those of us who went to the Monterey Conference, there was a couple law firms there and they did touch on, on those things and kind of gave us some feedback of what they see the law as. But how about our lawyers? Have we, have, have our law firm looked into what the legalities with all this are?
Have we, have, have our law firm looked into what the legalities with all this are?
Um, yes. If, we, we might need to look at, uh, different law firms, um, to be frank, um, to, uh, explore, and again, I, I believe we want all the information on the table, um, to explore all options. I think some law firms are, kinda are preconceived to go a certain way. So I will do that.
Oh, I wanna clarify one thing also. I know, earlier I said about, uh, that I think we agree with you. I, I gotta speak for myself, not everybody, but I think some of what you said, we, I think we agree with that, or I agree with it, and I think some, most of us do. So just, you know, but I didn't wanna say that we all agree with what you said, because it's totally me. And, but from what I've heard, it sounds like some of what you said, we, we all agree with and, and even Mr. Peterson's suggestion about what he wants to do, it, it's, it's actually questioning, uh, the government.
Well, we'll, we'll go, we'll, we'll go with this one, one last comment. Everyone has had, had their chance, so we will comply with, with the, the rules that we only take during the board meetings for public comment. So we'll allow you, ma'am, to speak for the three minutes as the others were, and then we will conclude our discussion.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so ma'am, let me get you started. If you could state your name, please.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Gabby Luna. I am a mother of four. I'm also a healthcare worker, healthcare professional. I worked in the ER for the last, well, nine years, but anyways, the, you know, the beginning of the coronavirus. Um, I saw the effect that it had on my children, the masks. Um, I have a child that's very intelligent and he was having pneumonia at the same person's school. Soon as he got to school, he had one particular teacher, one of his peers, that was very adamant that he keep his mask up and he was like, I'm trying to breathe. Um, now he dislikes school. And this is a child that loves school. And so it's very disheartening to me. And I do appreciate that you guys are going to try and speak to, you know, the powers that be to hopefully, um, hear our voices. And just like Mr. Morgan, Mr. Medifin, um, have, have mentioned, like the segregation of, you know, the vaccinated, unvaccinated. I'm unvaccinated, I have to test weekly. It, there's only two of us in my, um, I'm in the quality department right now that we have to test weekly. It kinda sucks. You know, I do feel like I'm being singled out and to be honest, my director, he fully vaccinated, his two parents fully vaccinated, they both got COVID. He wasn't being tested regularly. So he was in the office, you know, probably spreading, um, shedding the virus. Who knows? Thankfully, I have my protocols that I use, the vitamins and, and the prophylactic treatment that I use for myself and my children and my family that I have not gotten sick. Thank the Lord. Um, so I do appreciate that you guys, you know, are our voices. Um, a lot of us, a lot of our parents feel very, um, just, we don't know what to do. Like, I do not wanna get the vaccine. I do not want my children to get the vaccine. I do a lot of chart reviews, a lot of patients that are vaccinated five months after are coming in with strokes that need to get thrombolytic. Sorry, I'm like sticking now because everybody's looking at me. That need to get thrombolytic and 19 years old, thank you, 25 years old. And I'm seeing the, um, the effects of it in the medical field. And what's kind of scary is the physicians are not even contributing that to possibly a side effect of the vaccine, none of them. My aunt passed away about, um, August 23rd. She was, you know, she had wife loss. She was fully vaccinated five months ago. No, no correlation. And that's kind of scary that we're not even mentioning that, which that's a short amount of, of time between the, you know, last, last vaccine and that. And I've seen a lot of children have neurological effects and that's scary to put your, um, you know, just a Russian roulette on that. So I think that, please, please, please speak up for the children and for the parents that are afraid. And I'm so glad that there's a vaccine for the people that do want it. Absolutely, 100%. I am a medical professional, um, thank God. However, for the ones that have a little bit more questions, and even with the testing and the masking, I've not worn a mask in the public for the last year and a half or two years alone. Um, I do get looked, not gotten sick, you know? So there's just a lot of things that, um, I do appreciate everyone that we're getting meetings, I'm trying to speak up more. I like to kinda keep in the background, but, um, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, ma'am, we'll put her on the direction.
I just wanted to say thank you, uh, to everyone and, and for us, that we, that we were able to allow everyone that wanted to comment to comment, because this was the, this is a topic that we, you know, there, there wasn't a lot of people, but I'm glad that everyone got to speak.
No, thank you for coming, thank you for your comments and thank you, uh, to the board and cabinet for being here today.
One last thing, we have a superintendent meeting on Tuesday, correct?
Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday. So, so I believe at that point in time, I mean, I'm gonna butt out there for Mr. Peterson. Hey, he's done a fantastic job as far as getting, you know, some of those, uh, those, those FAQ's out to all district superintendents and, and sharing the documents that they prepared. And I think it benefits us all. Um, and maybe a, a topic of discussion from, from, from your point of view as far as with all the other superintendents, uh, knowing that the majority of our kids, you know, are feeders into Mercy Union High School District, that we send the same collective message, uh, you know, not, not only for, for Mercy Union, but Merced County in general, um, up, up to our state legislatures, whether it's Adam Gray or, uh, Ana Cavigaro, you know, where we stand as, as Mercy County, I mean...
Yeah, and I, I, I would say upwards of 80, 90% of us in the county are on the same page.
Yep.
Uh, it won't be 100%, but it's, it's pretty close.
And I think that your voice would, would speak volumes as far as, you know, the message that we're trying to send to all, to all the constituents, so.
Yeah, the more we can get to that, right?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Well, thank you, thank you everyone for, uh, for attending. Thank you for your comments and we will adjourn at 11:11.
Thank you.
Thank you.